Good afternoon, everyone. It is five thirty P M. Today is Tuesday, April twenty six, twenty twenty two. And this is the Finance and Audit Committee meeting. Call this meeting to order. Now proceed with roll call. Sebman Rangel.
Present.
Present.
Uh, Tita Bella.
Present.
Uh, Judge Mercurio Martinez.
Present.
And Jorge Delgado, present. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of Oracle Software Licenses and Support Renewal. Mr. Albert Chavez.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Finance Committee. Albert Chavez, Senior Director of Information Technology. For this particular item, we're requesting approval for the expenditure for a renewal for our Oracle Database Licensing. Oracle Database License is used for our Banner Student Information System. The renewal cost is two hundred and three thousand one hundred and sixty-six with eighty-six cents. And the term for this new renewal is June the first, twenty twenty-two to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And the expenditure is being done under Texas D I R contract, D I R T S O four-one-five-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Any questions from members of the committee? No.
I'm over the form of approval of the Oracle Software License. We will need for, for a motion.
Okay. We can move on.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Thank you, Judge. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of Spectrum Enterprise Internet Circuit and Ethernet Private Line, E P L for a one-year agreement. Mr. Albert Chavez.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Board. Albert Chavez, Senior Director of Information Technology. For this particular item, we're requesting approval in to enter into a new agreement with Spectrum Enterprise for Internet Service. Under this new agreement, we will be upgrading our Internet speed to two hundred gigs instead of two hundred, which is what we have today. So this will greatly increase the Internet bandwidth here at the campus. The monthly cost for this new contract is four thousand nine hundred and eleven with twenty cents. And we currently pay Spectrum four thousand eight hundred and forty-four with forty-nine cents, which is the difference of sixty-six dollars with seventy-one cents. And with this new contract, it would increase our bandwidth by ten times.
And just for correction, it's two hundred gigabytes or two hundred?
Two hundred gigs.
Two hundred gigs.
Yeah, sorry, we currently have two hundred gigs, two hundred megas per second. They were upgrading to two gigs per second.
Yes. I don't think anyone in the U S has two hundred gigs.
No, sorry.
Hey.
And for this particular item, this is a new contract. Spectrum requires a one-year commitment. After the one year, it becomes a one, a month-to-month service.
And it's a minimal increase, correct?
Yes, so the difference is sixty-six dollars with seventy-one cents on a monthly basis. So that's the, the increase. This is the new race. Currently, we are older race from Spectrum, so the new rate will give us more speed and the cost per month is minimal.
Sure. Chair recognizes Mr. Sebman.
Yes, thank you. Are we replacing any equipment or is it just the, like, the, the speed? Or does it come with new equipment?
One, one thing that I did not mention here is that we're actually physically changing the location of the circuit from the Avetiga Hall to the Martin Building. But there's no cost for the change.
Can you repeat that? You're changing it from where to where?
From the Avetiga Hall to the Martin Building.
And the reason for that?
Avetiga Hall is a vacant building.
Okay.
And it does not have power backup, generator, I'm sorry. And then the Martin Building, where we have our data center, we have a generator, which supplies power in case of an outage.
And that's the only equipment that's going to get replaced? Everything else will, will jive with the new?
Correct.
With the new upgrade?
So under this agreement, at no charge, Spectrum is running a new fiber line from their service location over to the Martin Building.
Is there, is there going to be, what's the timeframe to have that installation?
Once we start the agreement with them, they will put it on their schedule and we should estimate it about a month to two months. So it's not an immediate, it's not an immediate change.
Would those two months fall into the year?
No.
Or it start whenever the service?
They will start billing as one of the service.
Awesome. And this is for the entire campus here at Fort Macintosh?
Yes, sir. This actually is for this campus and the south campus. The second piece, which is that E P L line, basically, it's a private line that connects the south campus to the main campus. So the main campus goes out through the Internet to Fort Macintosh.
Awesome. All right. Any other questions from members of the committee?
No.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on. Thank you, Mr. Chavez. We'll move forward with Agenda Item Number Five, the March twenty twenty-two financial report. Mr. Sesavella.
Good evening, Board Members. Sesavella, V P of Finance, for the record. Included with your board package, you received a copy of the March twenty twenty-two financial report. As of March thirty-first, we have revenues of fifty-four million sixty-three thousand two hundred and seventeen. That represents eighty-seven point six percent of our budgeted revenue. Through the first seven months of operations, we are currently on target based on what we projected. Now, for the remaining five months, we are anticipating that we will collect the projected revenue. We currently have five point nine million still, I'm sorry, five point three million still pending from the state. All that is projected to come in. We do have a tuition revenue of three point two million now. Right now, currently, the year-to-date is zero because we have offered the incentives for both fall and the spring semester. We are not going to be extending it for the summer, so we project that there will be some revenue coming in for summer one and two registration. As far as the tax collections, we are projecting that for the last five months of operations, we'll be collecting about approximately two point one million. We have, again, we had budgeted for thirty-nine and a half. At this point, we are going to be surpassing that projection by about three hundred thousand. So our projections are that by the end of the fiscal year, our revenues should be around the sixty-two point one million. So we're projecting that we'll be a little bit over the sixty-one point seven that we, we currently projected for the year. A major part of that revenue is the emergency relief funding. We budgeted four point two million to come from the CARES Act funding. And so this afternoon, we did run a report for the tuition waivers, the incentives that were offered for the fall and the spring semester. For the fall twenty twenty-one, we had a total of three million eighty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars in waivers for tuition. In addition, we had for the quarter one of the C, of the continuing ed, two hundred and ninety-five thousand five hundred and ninety-eight. For the spring semester, and these are not final numbers yet, they're still working on the census information. For the spring, we had two million five hundred and thirty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-five. And for quarter two of C, we had thirty-five thousand eight hundred and seven. And for quarter three, seventeen thousand six hundred and twenty-seven. So when we add up all the, all the semesters, we're looking at a reimbursement from the CARES Act funding of six million seventy-one thousand fifty-five. That will be added to the revenue of the general operating revenue.
Chair. Chair recognizes trustee on hand.
Mr. Sebman, did we decide after all what we were going to do with the remaining monies? I know that you had given, I know that staff had several options. Did we ever decide what we were going to be able to do?
Yes, right now, we have two recommendations that we're working on. One is offering debt forgiveness for those students that could not pay down their balances for the spring semester. That way, we can, they'll be able to register for fall. And the other option is offering again another incentive for the fall semester, fall twenty twenty-two. We currently have available approximately three point one million to offer for those, for those incentives.
And, and what is staff preferring out of those two options? Doctor De Higien, that you would see more feasible for students? Do you think option A or B?
Well, Doctor De Higien, for the record, I mean, both definitely will benefit students. I, I think we've seen the advantage of both, so we're hoping that both will be initiatives that we can bring to in the May's meeting. So that way, we can start advertising those initiatives.
So right now, okay, whether it comes in May, hopefully, it'll come with, with the recommendation of, you know, you know, staff members to see what they would prefer. We'll go from there. And then on the, on, can you come with the numbers of how much we would, we would be able to, to forgive on the, on the? Like, what's the balance unless you have it?
I have a preliminary number. We did run a number and just again, because we're still pending payment deadlines for the spring semester, but the preliminary number was four hundred and sixty-seven thousand. But again, it included some balances that still needed to be paid down for those installment plan payments that would come in after, after the report date.
So we could, we, I'm sorry, so we can, so we can probably do both to be able to help. I mean, I don't know.
Most likely, we could. Again, if we, if we look at the numbers for this fall semester, fall twenty twenty-one, it was around two point seven million for the incentive. So again, looking at the four hundred and sixty-seven, it will give us around three point two million. Right now, we're still pending to close out some requests for equipment. But all indications are that we will have around three point one million, hopefully, a little bit more. And, and we can offer both options. Again, the four hundred and sixty-seven should be coming down once those payments come in.
I thought it was over the mark, but it's not that high. Okay. Thank you.
Expenses for the month of March are at thirty-two million one hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-five. That's fifty-two point thirteen percent of our budget. Last year, at this point, expenses were at thirty million seventy-six thousand three hundred and sixty-eight or fifty-one points, uh, fifty-one point twenty-seven percent. So as you can see, compared to last year, we're, we're pretty much on target also when it comes to the expenditures. Now, we are already looking at the, at the projected expenditures for the next five months, and we are projecting an additional twenty-two million thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty-eight in expenditures from, for the last four, five months of operations. So at this point right now, expenditures for, for the year are looking to come in at fifty-four million one hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and three. That would give us a, a savings of approximately six million dollars right now. So again, we're, we're tracking that information as we're preparing the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. Again, because that, one of the strategies that we might bring forward again is to try to take care of some expenditures this year that will be for next year. In other words, trying to acquire some equipment or some of those needs that are for twenty twenty-three with some of the savings this fiscal year.
Mr. Do you have a breakdown on that seventy-fifth anniversary, this latest expenditures range?
The expenditures so far for the seventy-fifth anniversary are, have been advertising so far.
That's it?
Yes. For the E D C Center, the revenue for the year is ninety-two thousand thirty-six. Expenses, expenses of a hundred and twenty thousand twenty dollars. We do have a net change to the fund balance of negative twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-four. Again, we are projecting that we will be closing that gap by the end of the year. One of the items that is still pending to be reported is the revenue that has been generated by the CARES Act to for those courses that have been offered to the E D C. Exterior services revenue is one point two million for the year. That's ninety-six point two percent of our budget. Expenses are four hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-two or thirty-four point three percent of our budget for a net change to the fund balance of eight hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-three. Restricted funds revenues are and expenses are thirty million nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-five. The majority of that revenue is due to the federal funding from P L. Approximately fourteen point five million coming from P L. An additional twelve point three million is the CARES Act funding that has been received this fiscal year. As I mentioned, we did receive approximately fifty-three million two hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and eighty-one in CARES Act funding. Out of the fifty-three million, we have already spent down forty-three million five hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-five, giving us with a balance of nine point seven million. From that, we subtract the six million for the tuition waivers, giving us approximately three point one, three point two million that we're projecting to have by the end of the fiscal year. For the facilities master plan phase three, we began the year with a balance of twenty-one million and hundred and sixty-eight thousand. We have interest revenue on the bond proceeds of eighty thousand four hundred and sixty-eight. Construction expenditures for the year total one million five oh six eight seventy-seven. We do have a net change or a decrease to a balance of a million four hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and nine. So as of March thirty-first, we have a balance of twenty million five hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-six.
Sure. Chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
Keeping in mind that there's going to be additional modifications with, with some of these buildings, this balance of twenty-one, of twenty million dollars, is that part of the bond? Fund balance that is left?
Yes, sir. So far, right now, it's twenty point five million that's available. It's twenty point five million that's available right now. Again.
And it's out, out of the bonds. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the fund balance right now, out of the bond money.
Okay. Are we being challenged because of, of the fact that, that, you know, there's a specific period of time in which we need to disperse that? And if we do not do that, I know that we are assessed a certain penalty, but I might make reference to that. Have we addressed that issue?
So far, again, we have not been challenged. Again, we do go through this process annually with a review for making sure that we're not generating more interest than what we're paying.
Yes.
And because interest rates, when we acquired the bond, were a lot lower, we certainly have not had to pay back some of that penalty. However, we are aware of the time timelines and that's why we are making sure that we move forward with these projects. Out of the twenty point five million, I can tell you right now that of the projects that we presented, we have approximately about five hundred thousand that are not currently allocated. And that is mostly made up of the interest that is being generated in addition to a contingency amount that we have for the projects. But at this point right now, we have all the projects identified. As we are working with the architect and the C Mar, we are finding that some of our projected budgets or budgets that we had set aside for some of these projects are, are actually, are having to be adjusted now because of rising costs in materials. So for example, this afternoon, we presented the, the Diesel Shop Expansion Project. And that particular project, we had originally, when we created the plan, was at about two point three million. And that was, we did have to increase it to four point three million. This, the guaranteed maximum price came in at five point six million, so we had to actually allocate an additional one point six million to the project.
Thank you.
Tax collections as of March thirty-first are at thirty-seven million seven hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and forty-four. That represents ninety-four point forty-six percent of our budget, of our tax levy. The tax levy for the year is thirty-nine million nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty. Right now, at this stage, we are projecting that our collection rate will end at ninety-nine percent for the fiscal year. So again, tax collections continue to be strong. And we should be reaching that ninety-nine percent collection rate at the end of the fiscal year. The last item is the general operating fund balance. Again, we began the fiscal year with a negative fund balance of two point five million. The revenues are at fifty-four million sixty-three thousand three seventeen for the year. Expenses of thirty-two million one hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight thirty-five. So currently, right now, we do have a net change to the fund balance of twenty-one point eight million. Again, we are projecting an additional twenty-two thousand in expenditures for the fiscal year. So at the end of the fiscal year, we're projecting that we'll, we'll have a, in addition to the fund balance of approximately six million. Any questions?
Any questions from members of the committee? Thank you, Mr. Sebman. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six, the February twenty twenty-two quarterly investment report. Mr. Sesavella.
Yes, as required by the Public Funds Investment Act, we are gonna, we are requesting that the board approve the quarterly investment report for the month of February twenty, as of February twenty twenty twenty-two. We have bank deposits of a hundred and five million four hundred and thirty-four thousand fifty-eight dollars. We had eighteen point seven million in the investment pools for total investments and deposits of a hundred and twenty-four million two hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The current rates right now, the money market accounts are yielding sixty-five basis points. The Lone Star Investment Pool is yielding point fourteen, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, fourteen basis points. And the investment pool, the F I T investment pool is yielding sixteen basis points. Any questions?
Any questions from members of the committee?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sebman. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Approval of Lease with Laredo Orange Crush for use of softball and baseball field at Fort Macintosh Campus. Mr. Sesavella.
Yes, members of the board, we got a request from five oh one C three, Laredo Orange Crush for the use of softball and baseball fields here at the Fort Macintosh Campus. This organization is in partnership with the Baywood League, asking for the use, or for a lease, a six-month lease for the use of the softball and baseball field here at the Fort Macintosh. This is something similar to what we have with the Laredo Heat for the south campus soccer field. The lease agreement would call for a six hundred dollar a month lease payment. Again, they have provided the paperwork, including certificate of liability insurance, as well as proof of their charter with Baywood League. as well as proof of their, uh, charter with, uh, Baybrook League, Inc. Um, again, uh, this is, uh, Five Oh One C Three that is requesting to use the baseball and softball fields for their, uh, Baybrook League, Laredo League, uh, for a six-month period.
Chair recognizes trustee on hand.
Thank you. Um, what are we gonna be doing with the, with the monies that are gonna be coming in?
Those go back into the general operating fund as, uh, other sources of revenue.
And, um, are they going to be paying for the maintenance of the field?
They will be taking care of, uh, currently right now, as, as we have it with the Laredo Heat, we mow the grass, uh, pretty much. Uh, same thing here, we have a contract and, uh, that is being taken care of by the college. They would be responsible for obviously, uh, maintaining the infield area, breaking the field, uh, lining it for their games. Uh, there's no equipment involved in this lease. It's only for the use of the fields and, uh, the adjacent, uh, restroom facility. Uh, but again, all equipment will be part of the lease, uh, as well as, uh, as the only maintenance that's included, obviously, is the mowing of the, of the fields.
And we're not gonna have any staff members, uh, doing anything out there? They're gonna be doing everything?
No, sir. Uh, as far as maintenance, uh, not only, only the regular maintenance that we do, uh, as part of our, our, uh, of the fields.
Are the fields locked to be able to not be used by anybody?
Uh, the baseball field, uh, that's a good question. I have not been out there yet, uh.
No, I'm watching if they're locked in with them that, mm, we won't be able to?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. No, sir. Uh, part of the agreement is that they have to provide a schedule to, to the college.
Okay.
Uh, we have priority for college events.
Hmm.
Uh, most, uh, the use of this field will probably be, uh, as, as it is with the, uh, Laredo Heat, is, uh, in the afternoons or weekends. Uh, and, uh, it is up to ten hours a week, uh, in, in two-hour increments or three-hour increments. And again, we have priority for college events. And again, part of the requirement is that they will, they'll have to work with the college on providing a schedule.
So if we have, let's say, and I, I'm just thinking because sometimes the city has huge events or has huge, um, I guess, uh, tournaments that bring a lot of revenue to our, to our city. Um, we won't be able to lend out the fields to them, even if they requested with two to three to maybe a month in, in, in advance? Are they willing to wiggle around? I mean, I do understand not every other day because that's why they're leasing it out. But are we gonna have any wiggle room to be able to help, you know, uh, the community or partnering government entities to help on, on lending the field? Do we have any say so on that?
Right now, again, the way we structured the agreement is college-related events. So, uh, at this point, we would need to revisit that if we were talking about another. It's typically when, when a, a tournament comes in, yes, it's through the C, it's, it's C, but, uh, it's usually a league that's bringing those tournaments in. So being that they're a league, uh, in a conflict with, let's say, I'll just give an example, Ponies running this, uh, tournament, they wanna use our fields, well, we have disagreement with this league. So, uh, it might be a legal, uh, question where we would have to restructure that.
And, and I completely understand them because of course, that's why they're investing so much money, or not so much money, but paying and also investing money on the field. But is there any way that we could possibly get, like, maybe two or three days inserted into the, to the contract to be able to say, you know what, we have two or three days that we could probably look into? Of course, not knowing, they might not get used, but I'm just saying, you know, 'cause like you said, Pony League, sometimes you have, you know, Border Olympics, that is a huge thing for our community and bring in again a lot of people from the outside. So we wouldn't be able to do that.
Uh, again, we can work it on the agreement. Uh, right now, uh, like I mentioned, the agreement is not structured in that way, but we could surely, uh, add a clause in there that would allow us that flexibility.
And it could be just two days, three days, you know, that it could be used and then that's it, you know? So then that way it's not locked into, like, whenever we want to. You know, that way it's, it's just two days where we already used up our two days not being, uh, college events, but maybe the possibility of that.
Sure.
I mean, we could look at that.
We'll, we'll take a look at that.
Mr. Vella, a couple of questions. Um, who determines the monthly rent, monthly lease agreement price? Six hundred dollars, where did that number come from?
Well, uh, that's a good question. We're, we're, we're basically, when we looked at the Laredo Heat, we basically duplicated that with the use of the baseball fields. Uh, uh, again, that was how we, we came up with that rate, six hundred dollars a week. Uh, again, the, the goal was to cover the cost, uh, for the institution. Uh, the only cost would be obviously, uh, the, the, the mowing of the fields. We're not providing any other, uh, uh, services to, to both Laredo Heat or this institution.
Okay, and then my last question is, uh, is there any, uh, nece- necessity for a subrogation waiver on their insurance toward the college?
I'm sorry?
Is there a waiver of subrogation required on their insurance towards the college?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Any other questions from members of the committee?
No, sir.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Vella. Alright, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, approval of matching funds required for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Texas Workforce Commission Jobs and Education for Texans, the jet grant application, uh, Dr. Noragasa or Ms. Sandra Cortez?
Yes, good afternoon, board members. Sandra Cortez, Dina Camminia, for the record. Uh, we are intending to apply for a jet grant in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the professional truck driving program to purchase, uh, simulators so that our students can have, uh, accessibility to driving, even if it's through a simulator on various types of, uh, road conditions. And it's something that we're not able to offer right now, but the jet grant does require a five percent match. So we're requesting approval for a maximum, maximum amount approval of seventeen thousand, five hundred that the college would have to match.
That's a very cool thing.
We do have the funds, correct?
Yes, yes, we do, sir. We looked into doing this several years ago, but at that time, the simulators were very, very expensive. They have come down in price and now there's a lot of competition, uh, for the sale of simulators. So if, uh, we do get approved by, uh, Texas Workforce Commission, we'll be able to purchase three simulators.
Great, awesome. Very good.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you. Any questions?
Keep it up.
I'm on.
Thank you.
You've done extremely well in the grant program. That was, I, we certainly congratulate you for all the work that you continue to do and have done, you know, the, in the past, so.
I have a great group of people.
Tell your staff. Tell your staff that we're very appreciative of their hard work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Alright, we'll move forward with, uh, agenda item number nine, approval to purchase digital screen microscope for incoming STEM students participating in undergraduate research as part of the LEAP project.
We have the members of the board, Rosario, Wado, Yohas, for the record, uh, Title III LEAP's project director. I am here today to request the approval to purchase digital screen microscopes for incoming STEM students participating in undergraduate research. The funds used for the purchase would come from the US Department of Education, Title III LEAP's grant for a total ex- estimated expense of a hundred and seven, uh, nine, a hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. We are proposing the purchase of forty-eight digital, uh, microscopes that will be transferred over to the Natural Science Department under Miss Samantha Martinez to help students taking biology and microbiology courses in the upcoming term. Any questions?
Great job. Any questions from members of the committee?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, and that will conclude our finance and audit committee. Um, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Will.
Second.
Second.
Awesome. Thank you, gentlemen. Alright, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.